Alexis. Alexis, you heard me? No, no, no.
Tomorrow, that's all we'll talk about. Tomorrow, that's all people will talk about. Okay, CHCO ready? You ready? I will now call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM here at McAdavick Place, St. George. Good evening and welcome to the April 2023 Regular Council Meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. This is our fourth official council meeting for Eastern Charlotte. I welcome and thank CHCO for being here tonight. Dale Wells, Florence Mitchell, and of course, their sire, Vicky Hogarth. In attendance tonight, we have Chris McKinnon, our Assistant Clerk, our CEO, Jason Gedet, and our Treasurer, Kathy Neves, here tonight. Thank you guys for being here tonight. And Glenn Hawkins is here tonight. He works for us too, so it's great to have you here tonight, Glenn. Number two is the adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for that. Okay, and I need a second before that. Counsel, Counsel Lee. So McKay, Lee. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Three is disclosure of conflict of interest. Anybody who wishes to do that may do so now. We have none of that, so we move on to number four. Adoption of the amendments to the previous council meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular council meeting of March 15th. Okay, Counsel Datarakis. Seconded by Counsel McKay. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That moves us on to business arising of the minutes. I don't believe there's any tonight. And that brings us up to six delegations. And six A is Wendy Brooks from Home State Administrator for ASDS. And Wendy, you have the microphone here, then. Jason, want me to remind you the game starts at 8:30? I just kid.
We'll be fast. My husband probably doesn't want me to go home then, to disturb him. So I'm Wendy Brooks. I'm the Home State Administrator, and I brought Debbie Thomas, my manager, with me. And so she's going to open up for me a little bit here.
So thank you first of all for inviting us this evening. We're very pleased to be able to come to your community. The New Brunswick International Student Program has been in play for about 20 years. We're trying to build our awareness. There's very few people, it seems, that know that we exist. We have 220 students in the southern part of the province right now from many different countries. And we'll share a little bit more information on that this evening. So our goal is to bring more awareness to the importance of having international students in our schools and how they have a positive impact on our communities at large. So Wendy?
Okay, I should have this memorized. We've been doing this for a few different councils, but we're excited to be here with you all tonight. So we just wanted to come and tell you a little bit more about our program. And so on these slides, you'll see some pictures of some of our students that are actually here studying right now presently in southern New Brunswick. So we are responsible, Debbie and I, from St. Stevens all the way to Sussex. So those are the students that we take care of. And then we also have the other three districts that also have administrators and managers that take care of those. So our students range from 11 to 18 years. The majority of them, I do find, are grade 11, 12, but they range from 11 to 18 from all over the world. So they come from different places and different countries all over the world. And when they get here, we, well, before they get here, and we're in the process of doing this right now, which this is a very busy time of year for us, is matching them up with a home stay. And so a home stay can be a single person, a family, a couple. We just make sure they have a criminal record check. And then we also go through a pretty in-depth application process. And we go visit their home and do all those things and make sure that they're the right fit for that particular child that we plan the place in their home. The students, when they get here, they attend public school and they also volunteer in the community. They do extracurricular activities throughout the school and throughout the communities as well. So we try to give them a complete Canadian experience. So once a month, at least once a month, we take them on an activity. They have a home state coordinator that is in charge of planning this activity. And so they do fun things that are Canadian, like they love to go do the maple syrup and they do snow shoeing and what else have they done? Curling. Whale watching, curling. I'm actually getting to do a lot of things I've never done before either, which curling was one of them. And I didn't really enjoy it, but it's too cold for me. And some of them put on skates for the very first time when they come here. So they love it. And they just, some of them love the sports and some of them don't, but they always find it fun to learn what Canada is all about. And hockey, of course. I don't know if that's the game you're going to watch today. Is it? Is it hockey? See, I don't know. My husband would be ashamed of me. And to, I don't know if it would be your surprise or not, but Canada is actually one of the most popular places that international students want to go. And I always share this story. I actually, I'm from New Brunswick, but I moved to Ontario as a kid and moved back last year. And my kids were teenagers. My son was in his last year of high school. We were always told that we're horrible parents for doing that. And he's like, why on earth do your students want to come to New Brunswick? And he would ask me that. So that would make, because he didn't want to come here. He's very happy here now. But so I would go around and ask the students, like, what brought you here? Like, what made you want to come here? And it's always the beauty and the nature of New Brunswick that seems to be the main thing, that it's so beautiful here and it's so safe here. And we have one student that did a presentation and he's like, yeah, it's awesome here. You can go out for a walk at 1:00 in the morning. We do not promote that, but you could. And in their countries, you can't do that. And so they love Canada, they love New Brunswick. And what we're trying to do is bring more of them here, so more of them can experience that. So right now, we have 22 countries that are in southern New Brunswick alone. And so I've listed some of them, Turkey, Switzerland, Spain, Mexico, Japan. And 224 students exactly are right now in southern New Brunswick. So that's from St. Stevens to Sussex. So benefits of having these students, like, we know that it's beneficial for them, but how is it beneficial for us? So as a community, it is beneficial to us because it increases immigration and population. And my favorite thing, why it's so good to have international students here, is that it teaches our communities more about cultures and people and languages. It makes us a more diverse community. And I moved to Ontario in the 1980s, just a few years ago. Sounds like I'm old, but, and it was not as diverse back then as it is now. So it's really changed and our program is going to further that change. And that is such a great thing because our own children will not probably go to Thailand. They probably won't go to China. At least mine won't. They can't afford that. And so we're bringing that to them. And so my daughter, she goes to Harborview and she's became very good friends with a lot of the international students there and learning about their food and learning about their culture and learning about the differences in their countries compared to ours. And there are a lot of differences and there are a lot of similarities. Like sometimes we're shocked that they have some of the same things that we do have. And so it's a great learning experience for our communities and our children. Having international students here contribute to our education system. So we talked about culturally, but also financially. So a certain, a huge chunk actually goes to the schools that the childrens attend. So if you have five children, five students in your school, you'll get, you'll get a certain, so a certain amount of money per student goes to each school. So if you have five, the people that have 25 students would get more. But they can choose whatever they want to do as a school. The principal and the school can choose what they do with those funds. And I'm going to let Debbie, she knows more about the money than me.
So we have approximately 220?
Two, twenty, thirty, yeah.
And each one of our students that come into New Brunswick bring $25,000 to our communities. That money is divided percentages more towards our schools than our district. They receive that money in the school and it's not money that's already targeted. For example, typically in our school systems, we have money for books, we have money for desks, we have money for courses, et cetera. But this would be above and beyond, so it gives a little bit more flexibility in our schools. So that's a positive thing for all students. They get more opportunities, more funds available to do different things. The district also gets a percentage of that money and they can support our schools through English as an additional language or supporting more subject areas in our schools. So there's a larger portion that goes to the actual school and a smaller portion that goes to the district itself. So the funds that are coming to us in our communities is significant when you consider the number of students that we have.
Okay, so that's from their tuition fees, but they also, when they're here, they love to shop. They love to buy things for their home, back home, trinkets and different things. Their families come to visit them while they're here. Some of them come at March break or Christmas and then they sightsee and they spend different money in our communities. And so that brings more money into our communities as well as more jobs for our community. Many of them choose to go to college and university here in New Brunswick. We're actually about to take them on a tour. We do that every year. We take them on a tour and show them the different colleges and universities and the opportunities that they could have to further their education here in Canada. And some of them even immigrate here. So sometimes they'll send their student, their child here to go to school here for a year and then they'll decide to immigrate here, so helping our population. So this is exactly why are we here tonight, because we want your help. We want your help with community awareness to allow more people to know about our program. We've gone to a few different councils because we are from St. Stevens to Sussex. And a lot of people don't know that we exist. And if we don't have community awareness, then we don't have places for these students to live and then we can't have more of them come. So that is really important to us. And so of course, ways that you can help us. You all could host a student. And that would be a great way. If you want to do that, see me after. And also by telling family, friends about our program and about the opportunity of hosting. Had to press this hard. By displaying, we actually just, for brochures. So we have brochures that, but I being new in New Brunswick, not sure of the places that we're able to post those. We did just order some posters and maybe you can help me with knowing where we're allowed to do that and where we're allowed to put these posters and these brochures throughout the community. And ads on social media, I'm sure on your own social media account, if you would share about our program. And I can send all that to you via email as well, on your websites, your social media accounts, and even on your personal accounts. We just hired a new ginger agency. Well, they're not new, but they're new with us. And so they've made new ads for us. And so if you see those on Facebook at all, has anyone seen those? Or maybe no? Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, if you do see them, share them. That's not good. So, and also by inviting Debbie and I and our students to come to different community events. Give us more opportunities for our students to be seen in the communities. Right now, for the new year, so September 2023 to 24, we only have one home, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this on my controller, but we only have one committed home stay family for this community, for St. George. And so we need more so that we can have more students come, so that it can benefit your schools here in St. George. And so, yes, so we need your help for that. And do you want to add to that?
Just to begin, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and to help us spread the word because we feel that it's a win-win for everyone. And we're all from New Brunswick and we all want our students to be happy and successful as well. So anything we can do in that way is a good thing, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Wendy and Debbie. I appreciate your presentation tonight. But what I'm going to do at this point is go to counsel one at a time. If you could just raise your hand and if you got any questions for Wendy or Debbie? Yeah, Counsel McKay, you're first.
Okay, my question is language barriers. How do you do that if you bring a student into your home? Do they speak English or how does that work?
Before students arrive, they do an online assessment of their reading skills, their speaking skills, their writing skills. And it's based on an assessment that's used in Europe for various languages. And so we would have students that are low on that scale and we would have students that are probably higher than Wendy or I. So it really depends on the particular student. And what we try to do, we try to match families that are similar in what they like to do with that student because that also helps build that relationship, whether their language skill is at a lower level or a higher level. And within our schools, we have access to English as an additional language to support the students.
Any other questions for counsel? Thank you very much for coming in tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to six B and Brianna Cowie. Brianna, you have the floor. Eastern Charlotte Waterways, thank you. Always great to have you here.
Thanks, Your Worship. Appreciate that. Chris assures me that it'll naturally extend on its own, so. Some mild technical difficulties. Thank you. Wonderful.
It's backwards.
It is backwards. You guys can see all our helpful little notes that we need.
Thank you so much, Chris. Thank you, Your Worship and counsel, and thank you very much for having us this evening. My name's Brianna Cowie. I'm the Executive Director of Eastern Charlotte Waterways, also known as ECW. And I also have with me Crystal Hiltz, who is our Quality Assurance Coordinator and Lab Technician. And this evening, we are here to present specifically on ECW's lab and lab-based services. So I know some of you might know us for many different things in the community and we do try to be a very valuable community organization more broadly. But a little bit of an unknown secret about us is that we do have a microbiology lab. And I've spoken about this several times with Mr. Gedet, your CAO, and how we can continue to work collaboratively together with municipalities in our region. So we wanted to kind of highlight a little bit this evening about that particular part of ECW. So thank you again. Okay, so we're a small but nimble team. There's about 11 of us, full-time, permanent, in positions that are all kinds of different variety over in Blacks Harbor. I know we're calling it all Eastern Charlotte still, but yeah, so we're located, we've got two buildings in Blacks Harbor. And we do all kinds of different things related to water quality monitoring and environmental monitoring. So we have a wonderful team of experts in our field who are really capable of being able to go out into different types of waterways and water bodies, whether it's related to our marine water sampling and analysis that we do in the Musquash Marine Protected Area, or freshwater monitoring that we do in the West Fundy Composite. So that's actually every riverway that exists from below La Pro all the way until the Scudic River. We don't monitor the Scudic, but that does include the McAdavick as well as the Digga to Wash. We monitor for all kinds of different parameters, whether it's related to water quality or whatnot. We also, I want to highlight that we have an integrated watershed monitoring program. And a lot of that work is being provided by and reported back to the Department of Environment and local government. So we have lots of different expertise and all of the different methodologies and processes that are required to be provincially recognized as an organization. And then, of course, with regards to our laboratory, we do drinking water analysis. We predominantly do E. coli and coliform for residential and commercial properties. And we are looking with the new expansion of our laboratory to also see if we can secure additional support with municipalities. And I was also invited tonight to speak a little bit about Canal Beach more broadly and recreational water monitoring in that particular area. So we'll get into both those topics tonight. And then if we're going to be talking about Canal Beach, I wanted to highlight that we do a lot of work in Lake Utopia already. In fact, this morning, our team was down there quite early, 5:00 AM, to look for Lake Utopia Rainbow Smelt. So we have contracts, so we work on with DFO and we're very familiar with the general area more broadly. And we have about 30 years' experience as an environmental nonprofit and modern monitoring group as well as 20 years of a microbiology lab that we've actually had in our facility since 2003. This is Abbas. He's one of our environmental technicians. So I just want to talk very briefly about our lab in particular. It's an ISO accredited lab and these are some of the services that we're able to do in-house presently. So we do fecal coliform analysis for marine waters. That's a larger contract that we have with Environment Climate Change Canada that allows us to do work within the Outer Bay of Fundy. And we also do total coliform and E. coli drinking water assessments, like I mentioned before, both for residential properties, commercial properties, but also for the rivers that we are monitoring on a very regular basis in the summer period. So the team starts and goes out in May and doesn't usually conclude until October or November. And all of those monitoring protocols are put in place and reported back to Department of Environment and local government. And depending on what water course we are monitoring, we have different types of sites that we sample, different types of frequency, different type of monitoring protocols. So all of that is very much within our expertise and our scope of work to be able to kind of shape what that plan looks like more broadly. And it can certainly be applied to Canal Beach if that's of interest to the municipality. And we also do field collection services. So whether it's monitoring for, I can never say this right, the Canadian shellfish sanitation program for shellfish and sanitation and opening of clam flats, or it's doing environmental monitoring and oysters, or if it's related to being able to do those field samples in and around our freshwater and marine ecosystems, we have all kinds of expertise to be able to do that stuff. And then we've also done recreational water testing as required. And with the expansion of our new lab into the front half of the old grocery store building, we're looking to continue to do more of those services for our region and our community. And of course, everybody knows what this is, I hope. That's the McAdavick River. So Crystal is going to get into our lab services more particularly. This is not the most recent update of our lab. Our lab is 90% finished. We're hoping to move in May 15th into the new facility and out of our current basement property in 881. So this is a little snapshot. This is a picture from maybe November of 2022.
Can confirm, it looks much nicer now. So we are, as Brianna mentioned, an ISO 1702.5 accredited lab, which means we go through rigorous audits and external reviews with the Standards Council of Canada. We adhere to the guidelines for Canadian drinking water quality set by Health Canada. These are based on the most current research into the health effects, aesthetic effects, and operational considerations. So they do consider the idea that you can't test all of the time. You need to have a set plan. We do regular water testing and analysis and it is available for municipalities. With this is total coliforms and E. coli, which we are accredited to perform in-house. It would also require heterotrophic plate counts, which would require expansion, which is part of why we are moving into a larger lab space. It's something that we are already set to do. We have a supplier for everything that we need. We would just need to get accredited. Another thing that would be required for municipal testing is inorganics, which we would send to our partner lab, RPC, in Fredericton. So some of the testing procedures and reporting standards for drinking water for our lab, for microbiological testing and inorganics, again, regulated by the drinking water guidelines. Samples are collected using sealed, sterile, quality assurance-tested bottles. We order them sealed and sterile and we test every batch that comes into the lab. And all of our samples are processed within 24 hours to ensure that none of the bacteria grows insanely or that it dies in the time that is in the bottle. For microbiological testing, we use the Call Alert method provided by IDEXX. It's a defined substrate technology. We use it because it is the leading example of defined substrate technology available on the market. We process them in-house. We do daily and monthly quality control and assurance testing. The tests are used to determine the MPN, or Most Probable Number, of total coliform bacteria and E. coli in 100 milliliter sample. So we use an MPN table that looks like this. We use the number of wells to determine the most probable number with a 95% confidence interval. Results are then reported to the customer in whichever method that they request. And everything is kept incredibly confidential. We will only report to the people named on the list. We send a pass or fail letter for residences. For businesses, they're sent a declaration to notify the Department of Health. For inorganic testing, as I mentioned, we send it to an accredited laboratory. In Fredericton, we use RPC. And we save those results and then also send them to the customer via their preferred method.
So that's a little bit of backdrop into our drinking water analysis. And now I'm going to get a little bit into Canal Beach. So Canal Beach was highlighted to us, and I'm sure all of you are aware, that a lot of the work that's being done right now, and there's obviously been a lot of government and community-based investment into the area. And there has been concerns related to the public as well as possibly within local government itself for cyanobacteria or for appropriate water quality. appropriate water quality. So I'd had a preliminary conversation with Mr. Gaddett a little while ago, and we kind of came up with a bit of a scope of work that could be something that could be applied to Canal Beach. So I have to just highlight ECW as an organization, because this is regulated by the Department of Public Health and the Department of Environment and Local Government. We are not the advisors as to whether or not the water quality is safe enough for swimming, but it is an opportunity for the municipality and for staff to be able to present to the public, saying it's being regularly monitored, the data is being collected, and then sent to the Department of Environment additionally to the data that they have been collecting, which is infrequent, because there are resource constraints within the department, which is an ongoing problem that many recreational water holes deal with, not just provincially for yourselves. And it's just an extra layer of confidence being provided to the public for appropriate displays of data. And we would assist with the municipality to kind of work out a plan to ensure that we're appropriately communicating within our purview as an organization and as within accredited lab as well. So as you know, the protocol, there isn't an actual water monitoring protocol for swimable areas more broadly within the province of New Brunswick. There is a protocol for provincially-run beaches. However, Canal Beach doesn't necessarily run under that, because it's a municipally-owned property. So it's regulated under the Department of Health at the province of New Brunswick, under the advisement of the Canadian Recreational Water Quality Guidelines. And it was just made aware to us during a watershed caucus call just last month that those are currently under review. So the national government has created a new standard, and it's currently under review in the provincial government. And that's just things that we are kept aware of as an environmental nonprofit, that we would be able to incorporate into this testing protocol for the municipality, so that it's totally free from your guys' own concerns and for your ability to keep up with that kind of information. So it would help to determine the E. coli readings, which we would be able to do in-house at our own lab. It's recommended for any recreational area or swimming area that are highly frequented by the public, that there is a level of E. coli and coliform testing. I'm going to get into cyanobacteria as well, because I know that there's a public health advisory for Lake Utopia. Sampling frequency will vary depending on the provincial requirements. For instance, Parley Beach, because it is a little bit more of a complicated situation, it's sampled daily, whereas Oak Bay is only sampled once a week. So we would work with the municipality to determine the best scope of work for both your financial capacity and needs, as well as what makes most sense to be able to communicate appropriately to the public that it is, in fact, a very safe place to swim. And then Canal Beach actually is 500 meters long, so it's recommended within the provincial guidelines that you would have five sampling sites. So cyanobacteria, this is the current area that the Department of Environment and Local Government and Public Health are now working collaboratively on together to tackle. So cyanobacteria, also known as blue-green algae, can form as either surface blooms, which is most often what you'll see in a visual survey. It kind of looks like, you know, it's very much blue-green at the surface, and bentic mats as well. And there are risks to the public health if cyanotoxins are present. If a bloom is deemed to be dangerous, the water body will be placed on advisory lists. For instance, Lake Utopia has been on this advisory list since 2008. So even though it is a safe place to swim and to often recreate, this has been the standard that exists within the provincial government. So it's maintained on that public advisory list. But an option that you can do, because you can't necessarily remove it from that list, but you can continuously educate and quell any concerns from the public by doing regular testing of that facility. Presently, the issue is that the government in New Brunswick doesn't have an accredited lab here in New Brunswick in order to take those samples of a potential bloom and send them away for analysis to determine whether or not it's toxic. That work actually happens in an accredited laboratory in Quebec. So it takes about seven to 10 business days. And by that time, either you've shut down the beach for that length of period of time, or, you know, people aren't going to necessarily use it. So then that can create like a negative connotation to the public as well. So we want to make sure we can remedy those concerns. RPC in Fredericton, which Crystal mentioned, is a sister accredited laboratory that we work with quite frequently, is trying to expand its services into more accredited cyanobacteria testing, and it's been under work for about six months now as well. And that would be possibly a standard where the provincial government would be able to do that more regulatory testing. One possible interim solution that could be done in the in-between period, from when Canal Beach opens to when you close it as a swimming hole, is there are algal toxins test strips from a diagnostic labs, and that can give real-time results as to whether or not there would be any potential threat to that particular water source. Did you want to talk a little bit about the testing?
I can.
Yeah, so Crystal.
The testing strips are really interesting. They're not approved yet for actually making the decision of closing or opening a beach, but because you can have results in as fast as an hour, they would be great for monitoring basically real-time, and you can say the beach is safe today, or it's not. They're very small little strips. Everyone's seen a COVID test recently, their flow assays. They look basically just like that. So it's not super detailed, but it'll let you know if the water is safe or not.
And that could be an effective communication tool to the public as well. So there's all different types of possible sampling protocols for Canal Beach. We put together a little bit of a chart, I think from some of the preliminary discussions that I had with Mr. Gaddett. The red would be kind of the requested, the far one on the right would be kind of what be considered the federal best standards, and then the blue column would refer to sort of an in-between of the provincially-regulated swimming areas and sort of what breast practice would be. So I guess that concludes a little bit our presentation tonight, and we just wanted to highlight that if the municipality were to consider going with ECW's lab services, we are a local option. Like I mentioned, we're located in Blacks Harbor. We do employ locally very much. We are currently a municipal property taxpayer, and all of the proceeds that come through our ability to be able to run our lab are reinvested back into not only our organization, but into the community as well through environment and community programs. So again, thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, we're happy to take them.
Thank you for coming in tonight. The, I just have one question. The blue-green algae, that's very toxic to animals, isn't it? Not dogs and, is it very toxic to?
Yes. For dogs, it's especially, well, they're more likely to drink the water, but it is also dangerous for humans.
Okay, good. No, I just wondered.
One thing to note, too, is that not every blue-green algae bloom is deemed toxic. There is a protocol in place to be able to determine whether or not it has the right parameters in order to be toxic. So for instance, there is a professor at UNB, Dr. Jennifer Lawrence, who does a lot of this sort of approach as well. So we would confer with her. And the reason why we brought up the testing strips is that they're currently being used by other watershed groups as well. So it's capacity there, knowing that it's been used in other areas.
I'll go to council. Any council, any questions? Counselor Ted.
Just regarding the test strips, you're saying they're not approved to shut down, or is there any movement afoot to have that done?
Yeah, so that regulatory decision-making happens at the provincial government within public health. So unless those standards change within the Office of the Chief Medical Officer, it's very unlikely that you'll ever see any of the identified water bodies come out of that, off that advisory list. Now, that doesn't mean that they're constantly dangerous or a threat to the public, it's just an extra condition. So the testing strips would be an interim sort of base solution for municipalities to be able to communicate to the public and say, you know, we've administered these tests on a regular basis, and it's indicated that there's no current presence of toxins, whether or not there's a bloom, because sometimes there can be a presence prior to the bloom actually forming. Yeah.
I do realize that you're, this is, you're just getting started on this, and I think it's very important that we have the water being tested, especially in the swimming areas. Is there any other municipality in the area that's already signed on, or considering, I guess maybe?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor Craig. Thank you. So we had approached the Village of Blacks Harbor about this in November of last year. Of course, it was inopportune because of amalgamation that was occurring at the time. So we haven't approached any other municipalities to date, because we wanted to finalize the renovations and ensure we moved our lab over. You guys would be our first.
I'm sure it's a service that a lot of the areas would probably would want, so a lot of swimming areas in the area.
Yeah, absolutely. It's certainly been a lot of discussions in and around the area, and we do do monitoring anyway, but no municipal contract-based monitoring. All provincial currently.
Right.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions, counsel, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, that brings us to department reports, and 7A is the general government report, and I'll go to our CEO, Jason.
Thank you, worship. General Government Report for March 2023. We have finally completed vehicle transfers from the province and change of license plates. We're also conducting the final transfers of buildings. And just to note for council, that will be required to do a property assessment of the three buildings we've received from the province, and that's, each of those assessments is about $1,700. And as like some of the other things we've done for transition, we're hoping to at least recoup that from the province as part of transition. Renovations are Phase 1 of the municipal office at School Street. We're still waiting some kitchen cabinets, air ventilation, and relocation of the Fire Chief's office. We've completed the first wave of reimbursement claim, and which we received back from the province, $117,000. So much appreciated. Project, we're finalizing project pricing for the water main break on Riverview Avenue. This is, again, going back to an older application that we have in for both provincial and federal funding, but we're modifying that project to just look at the scope of the break, just waiting back for one other contractor. So it's a little costly and something we may have to actually put an application in for once this is all finalized, a modified one. Projects, compiling cost and project overview of the expansion of the culvert system at Exa 52. Some counselors may be aware that there's a, sorry, highway commercial lot that we own as the municipality out just past Burches, so we'll be continuing to invest in that, looking for development in the future. The arena upgrades are ongoing. We have our requests for quotes for the lighting installs in the old Curling Club area, ordering gym floor, relocation and upgrade of the storage room to make an office in the Curling Club side, update the former bar area into a kitchen area, and awaiting project quotes for the camera, the web camera system that's been requested previous to the start of the last season. I attended the local government conference on reform transition in Fredericton, March the 30th and 31st. We closed two dangerous and unsightly premise files, one for Blacks Harbor that was opened and closed relatively quickly, and one for St. George as well. Personnel, we'll be conducting interviews for the full-time administrative assistant and receptionist. We hope to start those next week. Still waiting project costs for the fourth week of garbage collection, and it's not a week that goes by they don't request that from Pharaoh. Water and wastewater integration bilateral agreement, the IBA projects, we have two of those for St. George on a new lagoon to help support the industrial park, and new well development also to support the industrial park, and as well, an IBA project for Blacks Harbor for water exploration. So we've been doing, just in the last month, engineering updates and project reports that are required by the province. So those projects are ongoing. Housing development, myself and Glenn Hawkins, we've been working with two potential developers, one for Brunswick Street, another one for Hillside. One is a multi-unit project, and another one is single-family homes. Working on drainage and mitigation project for the area between here at Macadamic Place and the hotel. We've had some of the water issues at the lower end that we'll be looking at trying to fix. For Parks and Rec, we're confirming the start date of the baseball field. This is early today. I've received back from Jay Smith that he will hopefully be here this week, so we'll keep our fingers crossed for that. Parks and Rec finished work inside the Canal Beach building. Advised project engineer of concerns around retaining wall in foreign aggregate on the beach, so did have a discussion with the engineer, Silksteves, on this project. We do have some concerns around the retaining wall that was installed. There's some gaps there that could be safety hazards as well, as we're seeing some of the aggregate that was used as behind this retaining wall coming out on the beach. So it's a bit of an early alarm, but, you know, the engineer is now aware of that. We are conducting a review of bylaws and policies of the four municipalities, Village of Blacks Harbor, Town of St. George, ensuring that they're digitized and building an online database. In addition to changing of identification on the public works vehicles, we're also working on updating the industrial park sign. So we have all the public works vehicles now have been changed over to Eastern Charlotte. Release to the public of water and wastewater system mapping. So we've had for the last number of years, both Village of Blacks Harbor, Town of St. George has worked on an asset management project where we've digitized our mapping for our water and wastewater, stormwater systems, and we've actually made those public. Those can be found on our website, so people can, you know, if someone's looking at trying to do some development or developers in the area, they can see where water systems are. And we've completed cooling tower registration for the arena. This is a provincial requirement. Unfortunately, it does add a new annual cost to the arena, which is just north of $7,000 to $8,000 per year. This is a government regulation to stop the outbreak of Legionnaires' disease. So we do have a cooling tower there that is now registered and has to go through water filtration and testing. And we're working on two possible land acquisition files. And of course, as any land acquisition, that information will come before council, just really very preliminary at this point, and hopefully some positive news soon. And that's my report.
Thank you, Jason. It's great to see the good news with the arena, and all the things that are happening there. And I think the new clock is ready to go up within the next month or so, too. There's a brand-new score clock going in there. And I just want to remind everybody, this is not just an arena down there, it's a recreational center now. There's all kinds of things going on there. There's going to be, it's going to be open year-round with all kinds of different sports going on. And this is not Blacks Harbor's arena. This belongs to All Eastern Charlotte. So we want to make sure that this place is kept up and it's for everybody to use. I'm going to go to council at this point, to, if any questions, Counselor Ted.
Thank you, worship. I just had one question towards the A.O. Under the first bullet, in regards to the finalizing of transfer of buildings and the property assessments, is this a prorated amount from the time we're going to take actual acquisition, or is it, I'm just wondering where that amount comes from?
So this will be, in order for us to put it into our own asset list and inventory, we have to sort of know a true value, so it's more than just the assessed value. So we have to bring a commercial appraisal company in to give us this value. It's not something we can just take off the tax, the tax report. So it's required more or less for our own internal financials and our auditor as well, so just an added cost, unfortunately.
So it's an appraisal then?
Any other questions, Counselor Dedaracus?
For the second point, it's related to renovation. So I understand that we're 90% complete Phase 1. How many more phases are there?
And sometimes in governments, there's always wishful thinking of phases, to say that there's other phases. Maybe it's more hope. So there, you know, there are other possibilities of things we have to do. There's some doors that are outdated, just steel doors, just for security, that haven't been updated in 20, 30 years. So those are some of the things. There's also some items there in the fire hall, as well as the public workspace, that we need to update, you know, just with insulation showing in the public works area. We also wanted to, in Phase 2, to try to create some sort of an entry for public works to, you know, just from their own work area to immediately go into a break room. So, yeah, that was, that's some of the wishful Phase 2. It's all, of course, dependent on reimbursements we get from the province, and, you know, it may be if there's no budget this year, we look at it for next year. So it's all sort of cost prohibitive.
Any other questions? Sorry, we'll move on to 7B, which is the Building and Planning Report and Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, and we have Mr. Alex Henderson here tonight. Welcome, Alex.
So with the
So with the Building and Planning Report for this month, I reported we had three rezoning applications in the queue. I have an update there. We actually have one that we're able to refund because this was in Blacks Harbor where the village council had already rezoned the land. It's just the owners changed, and they weren't made aware of that when they applied, so that one is already taken care of. We also have a potential new one in Penfield, but we're following up with the applicant to see if what they're actually applying for in terms of rezoning is what they need. They may be able to do something less, not a very significant project. We also have an update regarding PrAC. PrAC approved a private access subdivision off Route 760, so that's Lake Shore Drive. And also an update from PrAC, Raymond Hall of Eastern Charlotte had his membership on PrAC renewed for a second term, and so that's fairly normal for members on PrAC to have a first term and then get a reappointment for a second term, and that would be the end of the, that term would then conclude. There's no third term for regular members of PrAC. And regarding PrAC bylaws and additional members, I think that was raised by council, that would be subject to a PrAC bylaw review, which is taking place right now with the commission, so they're looking at all the bylaws in terms of how we're constituted in the committees. With regard to development, in the time of the report, there was eight building and development permits issued. That number's now 10, so this report was April 12th, so a few days have passed. We have had five tentative subdivision applications that have been approved in this time period, and also, what's not mentioned here, we had 16 zoning confirmation letters that were issued for Eastern Charlotte. Also, I note here that we have one enforcement file that we've picked up again. There's not been action on this file. Can't say in specific where it is, so we're trying to get that back on, back on the awareness of the person who needs to come into compliance. Yeah, and so that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Just quickly, if you can, give me a Reader's Digest version of what PrAC is and what, basically just give me a quick overview of what they actually do. Most of the public doesn't know that, so.
Fair enough. Fancy acronyms.
If you could, thank you.
So PrAC stands for the Planning, Review, and Adjustment Committee, and this serves as a function for the Regional Service Commission to provide a planning service to municipalities. It is a committee that is a technical committee, it's not a political committee, but what we do with these, the committee membership is made up of people who have been recommended by the municipalities that are getting the service. So in case of Raymond Hall, he had been recommended from the Town of St. George to sit on that committee, so that was a couple of years ago. The PrAC, what they do is they have a few administrative functions under the legislation, so things that would otherwise fill up council's agenda, they're sent to PrAC to deal with as more administrative adjustment matters. So minor things like variances, temporary use permits, they will deal with as a kind of discretionary authority. They can hear from the public. They'll do a notification for neighbors surrounding the proposed project, and then they'll make a decision after hearing the evidence, and they make the decision based on pretty strong confines in terms of the provincial legislation. But the other big part of what PrAC does is they give recommendations to council regarding your planning bylaws, so it's council's authority to adopt a zoning bylaw or a municipal plan or rural plan, and when you do that, PrAC will review it and provide that technical advice, as I talked about, so that you have a second sounding board when you're thinking about adopting a planning bylaw, so it provides that service to council.
Great, thank you very much, and I want to say thank you to Raymond Hall. He's here tonight for taking on another four-year term. Thank you. Any other, any questions from council for Alex? If not, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us to 7C, which is the fire report, and I'll call on Counselor Thompson for this.
The fire report for March 2023. Blacks Harbor had 13 calls, St. George had 12, Back Bay had seven. Going forward, we're encouraging more first responders under departments for the reason that we're seeing more or longer wait times for amelices, and they could also, the fire guys, could also help with that, because they are, if they are first responders, they're equal to an EMT. All departments have been extremely busy with grass fires. I'd like to remind everybody that you're supposed to have a burn permit before you light a fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. I just want to say to all our departments this past weekend, I know they were going rail straight for the whole weekend. It wasn't one day that they weren't out, the trucks were out, and they were working together, all the departments in our area. We're working very well together. They were getting calls one right after the other, the whole weekend, so I can't thank them enough. You have to remember, ladies and gentlemen, these guys are volunteers. They leave their families, and they dedicate themselves to making sure that everybody else is safe in the area, so I can't thank them enough. I'll go to council at this point. Any questions on the fire report? We move on, and we'll go to the public works report, and I'll call on Counselor McCrory tonight.
May I hear you, worship. For Blacks Harbor area, general maintenance on the arena has started regarding the water treatment on the condenser. The wastewater report has been submitted to Department of Environment and Local Government. Equipment repairs have been underway for seasonal work that's going to be done this year. They've already started sweeping the roads and that, getting ready for the vacuum truck. They've checked all the first aid kits. New signs have been installed. Pothole repairs are underway. Repairs are underway for the community garden shed, and they started to clean up in the winter plowing and sanding. St. George, they had a meeting with DTI to go over what is expected as far as sign and road street responsibilities in the future. Some spots were pointed out where banholes have been pushed up as a result of frost and will need to be addressed in the summertime. Pothole, that's an ongoing thing for everybody. New locks were installed here. Did a preliminary review of newer areas of places needing new road signs, blue road signs and posts. Damaged or missing ones will be replaced as the new ones arrive. A new full-time hire was brought on board to add to the works crew. Some minor yard damage from snow removal was repaired at previous spots around town. Sweeper has been out, and they're getting ready for the vacuum sweeper. It should be here sometime anytime soon. Garbage cans can be, have been put back in place along Main Street. High-pressure chlorine injection panel at Well 6 was cleaned up and replumbed back into the system. One more of the works crew wrote a small water test exam, and they're just waiting on the results. Station 6, both pumps are working now in sewers, and still waiting for repairs to be made on pump, on number eight pump, as well as a new pump for number 11 to arrive. They have taken water samples so far this month, and they've all come back good, and all testing results on the lagoon are within set government parameters. That's the end of the reports.
Thank you, Counselor McCrory. I just want to take this opportunity to commend our public works crews. They do an excellent job. We've just gone from winter now into spring problems. I always say that every season brings on new issues, new problems, so our guys are kept busy, and they'll be quite busy coming in the near future here, just mowing lawns and taking care of all the things that we have in our area. We have a big area now that the guys take care of, so I want to thank them for the work they do. Go to council at this point, Counselor Dedarakas.
So in the public works reports for St. George, there's a mention that of pothole patching remained a constant activity. Where in St. George did we see most of this activity?
It would be Brunswick Street.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Dedarakas.
So now that it's, you know, it's theoretically springtime, and it's getting warm, I'm just wondering about the garbage cans along the trails. How often do we replace them?
To change out the garbage or new garbage?
Yeah, to change out the garbage, yeah.
Those should be done almost, well, they get more of a daily routine in the summertime, so now they're every other day.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? If not, we'll move on to committee reports, and our deputy mayor has one tonight.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee, which I am the chair of, there was a meeting in Oak Bay, April 13th, with the RCMP on community policing and direction. The three main direction that was put down to them by the committee and by the members in attendance and people was, number one was drugs and related issues, number two was theft, and number three was a show of presence on all fronts. It was also suggested that we look into a community watch program, which we are in the infancy of getting started and looking into, see if it will work for us. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any questions or comments on that from council? If not, we move on. Financial statement, I'll go to Jason first, and then maybe Kathy.
Yeah, I can certainly bring Treasurer or County, if you want to come up. So I guess just to bring council up to date.
Good answer.
Just to bring council up to date with the, with our transition and amalgamation of our own financial accounting systems with Town Suite. So we have been given a date when this actually will now happen. We're four months into this new year, and as I've mentioned previously, I thought this would be something we'd have done when we first entered the first quarter, but here we are in the second quarter. So we are looking at transitioning this, I believe, next week. This will merge through both financial accounting systems of the old Village of Blacks Harbor, Town of St. George, and then we will, once they're merged, build out from there as well, the new Eastern Charlotte, with all the other general ledger accounts that we would have associated with the former LSDs and other fire halls. So it's been a long process, and those that have, you know, been on council, I guess, before, know that this is not typical, that we usually have more reporting, certainly a month-to-date reporting, in response to the budget, of course, and to see where we're heading. So yeah, so there's lots of things that have been in play, and we're very optimistic that May will look a lot different for reporting of financial statements.
Any questions or comments from council at this point? Counselor Dedarakas?
I'm just thinking on the spot here. So come May, we're going to go through each of the reports and then approve them? Like, what's going to happen in May? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Yep. Give a month, month total. Look at January, month-to-date, and then a February month-to-date. That's, yeah, it's easy reporting. I shouldn't say easy reporting, speaking for Kathy, but yes, that's.
And Jason, you're saying like, because I was on the previous council, you're saying that what we're going to be getting will be similar to what the previous council got as well?
Pretty much similar, I guess. There will be some changes where we're adopting more of what the Village of Blacks Harbor did. You know, I guess maybe Kathy might be able to speak a little bit more on that, you know, of how we're going to look, how the reporting's going to look. Like a budget, so more of a monthly. Yeah, more of a month-to-budget type of reporting, seeing where we're at to the budget.
So it will say like, I'm not familiar with the Blacks Harbor format, but it will say like on the side, you know, this is what's left of this budget, like of that for that particular category?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions at council? Counselor Lee?
Just a question for Kathy, I guess. I would like to see a breakdown of department expenses monthly, something I could report. Is that possible with this new migration? You know, like public works, safety, that kind of thing, like maybe four or five different departments, and what expenses they've incurred on the previous month? Is that something?
We don't have counts for everything yet, because it's all separate, so as soon as it's migrated, I can get you really any report.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Any other, any other questions from council?
I guess just, you know, one last statement, worship. You know, just to let everyone know that as well, it's not just because the reports are not something that we're able to provide, that there still isn't checks and balances that happen. Certainly every invoice that comes through, signed off by myself, signed off by the treasurer, it's signed off by the mayor. It's also entered in the system. We have an accountant with Mark Porter that comes in regularly. You know, we do also go through an annual audit, and the auditors will be coming in before the next meeting as well, so certainly all the checks and balances are there, and, you know, to ensure that we're not, we're not just spending and just buying things without any type of checks and balances.
I just want to remind the public too, and everybody on council, is that this is a transition time. I mean, there's not many places in the province in New Brunswick that had to go through this. There's a lot of places just took in a couple extra areas. We actually had to put two areas together, Blacks Harbor and St. George, so this is fairly new. There's only, I'd say, a couple other places in the province that had to go through this, and I want to thank Kathy Neves and Bambi Scott-Levitt. You guys are doing a superb job, doing a great job under the circumstances, and I want to thank you for what you're doing. It's not easy work, what you guys are doing, so thank you. We'll move on now, counsel, to Old Business, number nine, and tonight we have, I'm not going to read the letters over again, but we had correspondence on Old Business last month from St. Stephen Education Center Turnaround Achievement Awards, so tonight I'll look to council for a motion on that. Counselor Lee.
During student participation in St. Stephen Education Center Turnabout, Turnaround Achievement Awards?
We have a motion by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Ted. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Move on to Old Business again, 9B. This is correspondence from the New Brunswick Dart Association, and I'll go, I guess, look for a motion for the floor. Counselor Lee?
I move to donate $200 to the New Brunswick Dart Association towards the fundraiser for the participation in the Canadian Darts National Championship at Saint-Hyssite, Quebec.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Okay, that moves us on to 9C. Date for public presentation by the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. I'm going to go to our CEO for a little extra information on this tonight.
Thank you, worship. So at this point, we're still awaiting the return of our 26-C municipal plan from the province. That would be the province, though the plan has been passed by the previous council of Town of St. George for that bylaw to actually have the full authority. Needs to be returned back to us from the Minister of Environment and Local Government, so we've completed and filed everything we need to do, and now it's in the province's hand to get that back to us, so my recommendation to council would be that we table this until our May meeting.
Okay, we have a recommendation by our CEO. Would somebody like to make a motion to table this? Counselor McKay, seconded by Counselor, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on this motion? I'm sorry. That was my fault. So we had a motion on the floor to table this, the public presentation, and we had Counselor McKay and Counselor Thompson second it. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. It brings us to New Business tonight, 10A, the Day Adventure Center food truck proposal. I'll go to council for that. Yes, our CEO will give a little introduction about that.
Thank you, worship. So we do have a proposal for council, item 10A. So this is a proposal to have a food truck at the Day Adventure Center, so while we do allow tenants to use the Day Adventure Center buildings this week, something that's a little bit above and beyond what is normally down at the Day Adventure Center, so this is why the proposal has been brought forward to council. So it is for, it is, it's, yeah, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Good.
So I should add that it So I should add that it will also use, utilize the building 11 that's down there as well.
Good. I'm going to look to council for a motion on this. Counsel McKay?
I move that council accept the proposal submitted by Shabam McKenna to operate a food truck at the Day Adventure Center, subject to signing of a license of occupation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, seconded by, we've got a whole bunch of them here. Deputy Mayor, you're eating my line of sight, so I'm going to go with you on that one. Okay, question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That moves us on to 10B, the ECW Partnership Agreement, Electric Vehicle Charging Station. I'm going to go to our C.E.O. for a little background on that first.
Thank you, your worship. So this would be a partnership with Eastern Charlotte Waterways to install a level-three charging station in St. George, and also to bring in a new fleet vehicle. And I guess maybe Brianna, if you want to add some more details to that, if you could, if you want anything, sure.
I just have to get you to go to the microphone. Thanks, Brianna.
For sticking around, I suppose. Yeah, so in March of last year, ECW applied to the Rural Transit Solutions Fund with Infrastructure Canada, and we received some funding in order to place some level-three charging stations. And I've been in correspondence with Mr. Gedet, as well as the C.O. of the Village of Gremmanan, related to their needs. So we're hoping to bring in a few, and it would be a partnership agreement where the municipalities would install and pay for 10% of total cost for a charging station. And Mr. Gedet also expressed that there is interest within council to purchase an electric vehicle as well, which would be a portion of that federal funding as well. So if you have any questions, I suppose I'm... I'd be happy to.
What I'm going to do at this point is look for a motion from the floor, and then we'll go into discussion of that in case. So I'll look for a motion from the floor first. Oh, good night, everybody at once. Counsel Ted, I see you're going to the microphone. Would you like to make a motion?
I move that council accept the proposed by ECW regarding the installation and operation of electric vehicle charging station at the municipal office, and to sign the partnership agreement with MB Power.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, seconded by, we have no second there. I'm going to go, Counsel Lee. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, question or comment? Counsel Dederakis, you're first.
Okay, so I first have a couple questions, and then I have my comment. So I know as a council, we know the cost of actually acquiring it and the cost of installing it. Maybe Brianna, you can answer this question. Do you know what approximately the cost it would be to actually operate it and maintain it?
Yeah, so that's a wonderful question, and I don't want to speak out of term because it's not within my jurisdiction, especially if you're going with the MB Power DC Fast Charge. But I did have a conversation just this week with J.P. Olet, who is the manager of the charging infrastructure within the province. So he would have those direct numbers, and I can certainly put him in touch with Mr. Gedet to get those numbers for council. It's really dependent upon whether or not, where you choose to locate it and the electrical capacity of that particular location.
Okay. The second question I have is, this is a question for Jason. So for those costs related to operating and maintaining the charging station, would that be a shared cost, or that just be a cost for Ward 3?
It would be a shared cost. Any new costs now of Eastern Charlotte, it's all shared.
Okay. And the last question I have is, when is the deadline to apply?
It's actually already been approved from the federal government. So we've received up to 80% of the funding. So I've been in preliminary conversations with the Regional Development Corporation to see if they would contribute up to 10% of it, and then the municipalities would also contribute another 10%. As ECW, our core objective is not to install and run electric charging chargers. It's not really within our mandate or capacity, but this was something that we had applied for in relation with both the CAOs from both municipalities to bring that capacity to you all in the region, because it is an identified need, and there is a significant gap in Eastern Charlotte.
I guess my question was, like, just in case any of the, like, I can't speak on behalf of all the council, but in case other councilors had a question, whether we would have time to actually answer them before we commit? That was just my question. But my last thing is just like a comment. So I love this idea. I think it's a great partnership. It is, regardless of whatever your stance is on EVs, I mean, this is the future. There is a need for alternative transportation in our area specifically for newcomers, and I think it would be a great way to showcase this investment and partnership with ECW. My issue is really location. I don't think the municipal office is a great location for it. I would prefer it somewhere on Main Street, somewhere more open, less congested. That's my stance.
If I could respond to Counsel Dederakis?
Absolutely.
I would concur, and I would really advise and recommend that the planning is done jointly with both the Service Commission from a transportation regional planning perspective, as well as Mr. Olet from MB Power, because we have had some preliminary discussions with that, and since it is his expertise on figuring out where things should be located, I think some additional research into that would be really good proactive planning for the municipality.
Any other questions, or Counsel McKay?
So the motion is read that it's going to be at the municipal office.
That's correct.
So if we vote on this, is that set in stone that it is at the municipal office?
That is correct.
So then...
Yeah, that's, that's the motion, that it would be set in stone.
Okay, so how do we fix that?
I'm willing to amend that motion, because I moved it, so I could amend that.
Okay, you go ahead, Counsel Ted.
I would amend the motion, move, council accept ECW regarding the installation and to operate of an electric vehicle charging station, to be determined and sign the partnership with an agreement with MB Power.
Okay, we have an amendment. I have to go to Counsel Lee. Do you agree with that amendment? You were the second there, okay? Okay, so what we're going to do now is vote on the amendment to agree to that. All those, we have a mover and a second there. All those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye. Contrary, okay, now we're back to the motion, the new motion, which is without the location on it. Any other questions, questions or comments on this motion? None? All those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that is passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 10C, Service New Brunswick Agreement with the Dangerous and Unsightly Premises. Look, I'm going to go to Jason first to get a little background on this.
Thank you, your worship. So despite the fact of being a rural community, we certainly can still pass bylaws that have the authority over all of the rural community of Eastern Charlotte. So one thing that we've looked at is the services that are provided by the minister in, for Eastern Charlotte. One of those is dangerous unsightly. Local Governance Act does allow us to create a bylaw and to enforce the dangerous unsightly and bring that service back to the local government. And we have been offered the opportunity to sign an agreement with Southwest Service Commission through a service agreement, which they'll work with the municipality and develop dangerous unsightly bylaw and move towards enforcement with the dangerous unsightly bylaw with the Southwest Service Commission. They, I'm sure, I'm not sure if Alex is still here, or maybe, there he is, okay. Alex can probably speak to some of the history that they've had with enforcement and other committees such as McCadham, and certainly my recommendation.
I'm going to go to Alex at this point, just to give council a little more information before I entertain a motion.
Sure. Thank you, your worship. So, yeah, the, I guess, the proposed draft agreement in front of you would be contingent upon you passing a dangerous and unsightly premises bylaw for the municipality. And as the C.E.O. mentioned, the ability for the rural, it's considered rural community now, to pass a bylaw like this is possible under Local Governance Act despite the minister prescribing you the service. So the difference would be significant, actually. What the Service Commission has right now is building inspectors who are experienced with administering this type of bylaw. And we've been doing this in the village McCadham for a number of years now, and had great success with their council on working with them to clean up properties that are fallen into derelict and dangerous status. Dangerous and slightly premises sounds like you're going after tall grass. That is not what it's about at all. It's about dealing with properties that are a danger to the public primarily, and unsightly has a lot to do with actual environmental contamination, more properties that are just completely overwhelmed with refuse. So there are very strict limits on what it is, and you actually have to adopt the legislation as is when you make a bylaw. So there's really no variation to what one community versus another has with dangerous unsightly. So if we provide the service, the big difference is that when you have a property that is, let's say there's an absentee owner, and it's fallen into great disrepair, and it's caused concern for community where kids may be breaking into the building, causing fires or other types of undesirable things that we all know. If you go through the process as a local government and put orders against the building, notifying the property owners in the legislated fashion, you must follow the process to a T. If there is a property that doesn't come into compliance after the orders are issued, council can take the action to demolish a dangerous property, something that is, meets all the tests of being a danger to the public by virtue of being structurally unsound. And when you do that, that bill can be forwarded to the Department of Finance. So that's the big difference. So when the minister provides the service, they don't have the ability to bill themselves to pay for the cost of demolition. So they have to really stretch their resources, and they do, they do do the work of enforcement, of course, but they have to stretch their dollars over across the whole province, and they can't take on significant projects all at once. So where municipality can do it, and then invoice Department of Finance for unpaid bills related to demolitions, if there's the case of that, that's a very significant difference in terms of the local government doing it, with Regional Service Commission, staff support to guide you through it and provide the service.
Just stay right where you are for a second. I'm going to go to council at this point and entertain a motion.
I guess just one, just one other final note, your worship. So as well, just for everyone's clarification, this is not a bylaw that we're doing today. It's a service agreement, so this would start the process of us, you know, formulating the bylaw, municipality and the service commission. And as any other bylaw, that would have to go through three readings. So there would be a bylaw that is fairly standard across the province for dangerous unsightly, because it is part of the Local Governance Act. However, you know, we've had some discussion on having an accompanying policy that would sort of, you know, govern how we're enforcing the bylaw. So as Alex said, this is not some sort of action to get people to, you know, mow their lawns or, you know, clean their siding or whatever. So a policy that, again, will be adopted and accepted by this council would give us some clear definition of what we're trying to do for dangerous unsightly here in Eastern Charlotte.
So tonight's motion, that's before council, would be to do the service, the service contract is basically what it is. So I'll go to council for a motion. Counselor, Deputy Mayor, sir, thank you.
I move that council accept and sign the dangers and unsightly premises service agreement with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission.
Great. We have a second there, Counsel Ted. Excellent. Question or comment? Alex is still here, if you have any questions or comments? This is just basically the contract for enforcement and helping out with the bylaw itself. Any questions, any other questions or comments for Alex before he leaves? Just one, I have one quick question. How soon can we have that bylaw in place?
So the bylaw, like any Local Governance Act bylaw, requires three readings of council. So however, you're, I'm not sure if your procedural bylaw allows you to do two readings a night? It does? Okay, so then I guess it's, once you have the copy of the bylaw, which will probably be at next meeting, and then it'll be the follow-up meeting to do the second and third readings likely.
Yeah, so we're talking about two months down the road.
Yeah.
Great, excellent. Couldn't happen any sooner, as far as I'm concerned. All those, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously, excellent. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. That brings us to 10D, which is the Canal Beach Canteen Building, and I'm going to go to Jason again for a little background on that before we move to council.
Thank you, your worship. So the tender request for proposal 23, 2023-01 Canal Beach Canteen, this RFP was posted on March 3rd through direct invites and with advertising online for open entry. This RFP closed on April 7th at 1:00 P.M. We did receive one proposal, and that was from Cassandra Jones. No other submissions were received. All proposals will be subject to signing a license of occupation. Leave shall contain limitations and restrictions and guidelines. It's my recommendation that we accept the proposal as provided.
Okay, I'll look for, counsel for a motion. Counsel Lee, you go first.
I move to award contract RFP 2022-01 Canal Beach Canteen Building to Cassandra Jones for the 2023 season, and subject to signing of a license of occupation.
Great, Counsel McKay, you had your hand up, so I'll give you the second. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. That's passed unanimously. There's two new eating places this summer, all right. All right, proclamation is 10E. There's no motion required on this, I guess, so I'm going to go ahead on this. Municipality of Eastern Charlotte proclamation, whereas Lyme disease is one of the fastest-growing vector-borne illnesses in the world, and whereas the population of ticks, the primary vector for the transmission of Lyme disease in New Brunswick and other parts of Canada is growing and expanding in New Brunswick, and whereas the number of New Brunswickers suffering from Lyme disease is increasing from one year to the next, and whereas awareness plays a key role in making this disease known to the public, as well as the steps to take to prevent contacting the disease, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Craig, Mayor of Eastern Charlotte and New Brunswick, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Lyme Awareness Month in Eastern Charlotte and New Brunswick. And witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Eastern Charlotte to be fixed this 19th day of April 2023. New business, 10F, Appointment of a Building Inspector. I'll go to Jason first, would you like to give a little quick background on that?
Thank you, your worship. So with the, with the Service Commission, it's requirement that this council makes the appointment for another building inspector. The staff member is a member of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. And I guess, just for, just for notation, it would be John Raymond Cliff.
I'll look for a motion from the floor. Counsel McKay? Secondary would be Counsel Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Authorization, next is 10G, Authorization to Borrow. Okay, I'm going to go to Jason again on this right here. I'll give you my notes.
Thank you, your worship. I'll look towards our treasurer, maybe to give us just a bit of a, can you give us maybe a little update on, I guess, what this is, is with the, with the combination of both the Town of St. George and the Village of Blacks Harbor, this would be an increase of 4% to the annual general operating fund. This is for short-term, non-capital operation authority to borrow. So with the increase of what our annual operating cost is for the general fund now being just below $7 million, it does give us the ability to seek that additional 4%.
Okay, what I'll do now is I'll go to council for a motion. Counsel Lee, excellent.
Be it resolved that the municipality of Eastern Charlotte be granted authorization to borrow money or to guarantee the repayment of money borrowed for the purpose of funding general operating expenses, and the amount not to exceed 4% of the annual general fund budget.
We have a motion on the floor, but Counsel Lee, we need a second there for that. Counselor McForay, did you raise your hand? Okay, McForay? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. No contrary? No contrary, and that's passing unanimously. That moves us on to fund utility operating expense tonight.
So still under New Business 10G, so this is 10G.2. So this is a 50... Sorry. So this is still under item 10G.2. So this is the utility fund operating expense. So much like the general fund, utility, which is our water and wastewater side of the house. So this would be to increase the spending limit to 50%. Is there anything else for the treasurer? No? All good. So yeah, we recommend it should be 50%.
Great. At this point, I'll go to the council. And Councilor Lee, did you want to make a motion on that too?
Sure. Be it resolved that Municipality of Eastern Charlotte be granted authorization to borrow money or to guarantee the repayment of money borrowed for the purpose of funding general operating expenses in the amount not to exceed 50% of the annual utility fund budget.
We need a secondary for that motion. And Councilor McQuarrie, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passing unanimously, I guess. Next is 10G3, and I'll go to Jason again.
Your worship. So this is basically with our credit cards, we have Visa card. This is for our use of our credit card. We have a Visa card with Eastern Charlotte. And currently, we've, it was just the town of St. George, we had sufficient amount of credit limit. And then that was with about $2.5 million in annual. But now we're, again, just shy of $7 million annually as Eastern Charlotte. So bills come in, contractors, majority of contractors are paid now, and vendors are paid now through credit cards. So it's the recommendation that we increase the credit card limit to $80,000. I'm just looking at the treasurer, I believe. What's our current?
75.
So current is 75. So it's an increase of 5,000.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion from council at this point. Councilor Lee?
Be it resolved that the Municipality of Eastern Charlotte be granted authorization to borrow money or to guarantee the repayment of money borrowed in the amount not to exceed $80,000 by way of Scotia business Visa card.
We need a secondary for that? Councilor Thompson? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passing unanimously. Excellent. 10H, this is YMCA request for summer use of the MacAdavick Place Community Center. And I'll go to Jason on this one again.
Thank you, worship. So we've received a proposal and request from the YMCA, from St. Greater St. John, to utilize here at the MacAdavick Place for their summer programming. And they're also doing some activities in Blacks Harbor, but they want to extend the summer programming camp here in St. George. So I believe it's for a nine-week time period, July, August, to the first part of September. And this would be for the daytime with, again, a condition of license of occupation stating that they would have to be, they'd have to wrap up, I believe, at 5:30, I believe. I think that's what it was, 5:30.
Great. Okay. That was the little background on that. I'll entertain a motion from council on this. None? No motion at all? Councilor Lee?
MacAdavick Place Community Center by the YMCA for their summer camp, day camps program from June 26th through September the 1st, 2023, and subject to signing of a license of occupation.
Great. We have a motion. And Councilor Detarakis is gonna second that. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passing unanimously. That moves us on to, correspondence again, 11A, the Family Worship Center. Do we have the, I don't think I have that letter. Do I have that letter? Okay, maybe. I don't think this was read. This wasn't read, so it should be read tonight last month. Dear Council of Eastern Charlotte, Family Worship Center Church is excited to have the opportunity to bless our community this upcoming Easter weekend. We're kind of behind the times here. And we are looking for sponsors to help make this happen. By choosing to be a sponsor, your business will be recognized and promoted to our community and those who win the prizes. What we're looking for are prizes suitable for kids and youth for our community-wide scavenger hunt from April 3rd to the 6th, as well as our community outdoor Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 8th. If you'd like to be part of these exciting events, we will need any prize donations by March 28th. We thank you for your consideration to blessing our community. Below is a description of the events, or you can check out our website, www.easternb.ca. The scavenger hunt will run from April 3rd to the 6th. A clue will be posted on the Easter Egg Facebook event to where an Easter egg can be found somewhere in Eastern Charlotte. Those who decide to search and find for the lucky egg will bring it back to the FWC Church, Family Worship Center, to win the donated prize from your business. Egg Hunt, the Egg Hunt will take place on April 8th at 11:30 AM at the Family Worship Center and is open to ages 0 to grade 12. Every child and youth will receive a goodie bag treat as well as the chance to find the lucky eggs with the tickets hidden inside that say they win a grand prize. We thank you for considering and partnering with us as we create safe and fun activities for the families of Eastern Charlotte. Sincerely, Pastor Brad and Caitlin Crick. Council, what is your desire for the new... Councilor Lee?
Albeit a little late, we've decided to give them the money. So I do move that the Family Worship Center be given the amount of a couple hundred dollars, $200 towards the Easter Egg Hunt.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilor Ted. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passing nationally. That brings us, everybody, to public presentation and appearances number 12. Please note, under bylaw EC-01, section 7.1, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. I'll remind everybody that this is not a question and answer period time. It's just a simple coming to the podium, letting us know your name and your civic address, and then you have five minutes. Excellent.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
And I live on 36 Fundy Bay Drive, which I don't have a sign, so I think I live in Fundy Bay Drive. But my question is, where do I go to put a proposal in if I want something done? Well, like right here, they have like a food truck proposal. Or like if I want something upgraded, or where do I go to put a proposal?
And that's one, I just remind you, this is not a question and answer time, but that's all right. I'm gonna give, I'll give you a quick answer to that. All you gotta do is send us a letter to mayor and council and just drop it off to the main building down here. Do you know where our office building is down the street here? The St. George, used to be the municipal building, now it's Eastern Charlotte. It's the fire hall. Just drop it off there, or you can email any one of the councillors or Jason himself. So that's the proper way to do it. Just give us, and give us all the information that you can give us.
Okay. Sorry about this.
No, that's no problem at all. No, that's great. No, I appreciate it. No, I'll be looking forward to your letter. Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Going once. Oh, I started to do a countdown there. I'll come.
Raymond Hall, 108 Mount Pleasant Road. I'd just like to thank everybody for letting me do the practice again for another four years.
Well, thank you for doing it. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. One more time. Anybody else? Once? Twice? We got another one.
Hello, everybody. I want to say, first of all, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just need your name and your civic address.
Yes, my name is Dale Wells. I'm from Beaver Harbor. And I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here this evening. I want to thank, worship, Mayor John Craig, the CEO Jason Gedet, and the councillors. First of all, I want to say, as many of you know, I volunteer as a cameraman for CHCO Television. While I want to express and make it clear that my words today, which I'm about to speak, are in no way associated with CHCO Television. I speak as a taxpayer of Eastern Charlotte. It's important to note that what I'm about to say is in no way malicious, but for the good of the entirety of Eastern Charlotte. I'm confident the council has been informed regarding duties of municipal government, including rules, regulations. However, any council member is uncertain, well, I encourage he or she to seek and find answers to extinguish any doubts regarding rules and laws. Council members have been placed in their position to represent the needs of the entirety of Eastern Charlotte. Moreover, it's my understanding that the council member who has any personal gains or losses regarding any issues shall not take part where there is conflict of interest. If he or she does so, I encourage charges to be laid on that council member. I refuse to allow any council member to use my tax dollars for personal interest. I strongly encourage council to think carefully and ask themselves if there is any way of personal gain. Now, the community infrastructure is supported by tax dollars. We all know this. The more tax dollars, the better our infrastructure. It's that simple. In order to sustain what we have, we will in the future continue to need more tax dollars. It's inevitable. The costs go up. Therefore, we will need more tax dollars to sustain what we have. However, it's not all gloom and doom. In order to alleviate much of that burden, we can allow housing and growth within our community, including allowing farmland to be sold for housing and development. I don't think that I need to remind you that it's a very competitive market. Therefore, in order to attract doctors, nurses, nurse practitioners, yes, the teachers, firemen, list goes on. Having a council that is unequivocally determined to encourage and support housing and industries and all things necessary to sustain a healthy lifestyle is what I believe we should all desire. We can't have our cake and eat it too. We must allow change in order to have a healthy lifestyle, the lifestyle that we want and we need, not only for ourselves, but also for our children and our grandchildren. Time doesn't allow me to expand on all the benefits from allowing development, but I'm sure you realize there are great benefits to be had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? No, sorry, not questions. Any other persons wanting to come up to the microphone? If not, we'll move on. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. And that is a good point. A lot of the council usually stays after the meetings, or they come in early. I think quite a few are almost an hour early here for the council meetings. So anytime anybody wants to ask questions to council, you're welcome to do after the meeting or before the meeting. Councillors are very open to answering questions at any time, as myself. So feel free to come up. I think a lot of people would rather ask questions one-on-one anyway, instead of in a public forum anyway. Okay. At this point, we're, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
My name's Joe Craig. I live in Penfield.
Oh, another Craig in the building. Excellent. Excellent.
I was just wondering, is there any way of changing, you don't have to answer this, of course, section 7.01, so we can have a more question and answer period, so we don't feel like we're doing something wrong and we can ask these questions freely? I don't know if anybody can answer that. Thank you.
Yeah. The only way I could answer that is that council would have to go through the bylaw and change the bylaw completely to do that. So it would be a...
Okay. Then how would we go about changing that bylaw? I'd be interested in knowing that. Thank you.
Yep. And that would be up to council if they so desired to change that. It wouldn't be just one change. It would probably be a wholesale change to the whole, what was given to us was from the province of New Brunswick. So there's probably, there probably could be other things added to it or taken away from it. So it would be definitely something that council could look at in the future to do. Yeah, that's basically the best way to answer that. Statements by members of council, number 13. I'm gonna go to my right, and I'll go to Councilor Ted. I believe you're first. Councilor McKay.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. A lot of faces here tonight. And that's it.
Short and sweet. And you know the game's on. And then, Councilor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor Craig. I'd like to take a couple of minutes here just to review a few things in my ward, Ward 1. I've had some calls, and I think this is a good spot to address some of them. All these things that I'll be talking about are in my ward. So the first one is the Community Hall in Bonny River, Second Falls. Eventually, we got that building turned over to our municipality, and we discovered that there were some severe safety issues there, mostly for disabled and seniors. So with the help of Andrea Mason, and I would sincerely like to thank her for all our efforts, we were able to secure funding from the province to address all these safety issues and also put a new washroom, wheelchair-accessible washroom into that building. So kudos to her. She worked hard to help the council and myself get that done, get the money. Because as you know, we're pretty limited on funds this year. Our budget is pretty streamlined. The other thing, one of the other things is Canal Beach. I'd like to tell everyone, it's opening up on June 1st. And I think I heard CAO Jason say that the wharf is going in next week, or he thought it was, out there on that beach. So it's exciting. It's a new beach, basically. A lot of money was spent there by the province. And it's gonna be a nice vendor. The next one is, all the councils have been discussing roads in our community, the need for some work to be done on roads. So all the wards have something that they need looked at by the Minister of Transportation. In Ward 1, my concerns were the Manor Road and a piece of the old St. Andrews Road. That's a gateway, basically, to the highway. And people from Bonny River, Second Falls, Canal, everybody from that area filter through those two lanes onto Number 1 a lot of the times, and those roads are deplorable. The people that live on those roads must suffer every time they drive down them. So again, I'd like to thank Andrea Mason, who is working with the minister's office to try to get us some funding to work on those two roads. And there's other roads that she's gonna be helping us with too, because there's several, I think, in our community that need to be looked at. But those two are really the ones that I've been concentrating on lately. I did get a call from Hillcrest Subdivision. A lady was concerned about the shoulders on the road up into the subdivision, and I know that's a surprise to some of the councillors here. But I haven't had a chance to drive in there, and I'm sure that the public's work will have a look and see if there's anything that needs to be done up in there with those shoulders. The last, but certainly not least, and I've been asked this question many times, as I'm sure most of the councillors, the Day Adventure Center. Everyone would like to know what's gonna happen with that. So the plan is to revise the area into something new, with the intent to bring people in, attract them to come and do something down there. It's a beautiful spot. It's right on the water. And we have a cluster of buildings there that, not just this council, but a lot of councils over the years before us have been trying to get used. And it's just not working. So the plan right now is to, in the fall, after all the activity is slowed down in that area, to give these buildings away, all except for one with a bathroom, because we are going to keep that area going, and we are gonna leave the stage for entertainment there, keep the grounds up. At the very least, we'll have a nice green space there with some sitting rooms and a few other things. And we're all open to suggestions. and a few other things, and we're all, we're all open to suggestions on activities that can happen in that area. So anyone that has an idea, feel free to talk to any of the councilors on this, because, you know, it could be anything, even a weekend craft and food fair, I think we're the only region in this whole, or the only community in this whole area that doesn't have one of those on the go for the weekend, but it's a great spot, we're not, we're not abandoning it, we're just going to change it. And the, the reason we're getting the buildings out of there is because they're just sitting there growing old, and we would rather see somebody get some use out of them, as opposed to letting them just fall down. We don't want to spend good money after bad, and that's what we'll be doing, is to maintain these buildings with no one in them, so. That's, that's, that's the plans for Day Adventure Center, but like I said, we're all open to suggestions, if anybody has any, and if you have anybody that you know that has some, let us know, because we are going to do something with it, it's just too nice a spot to let go. Okay?
Great, thank you, Councilor Lee. I'll go to Councilor McQuarrie, thank you. No, oh, nothing, sorry. Councilor Deterakis.
I'll go last, actually.
By me?
I would like to go last.
You'd like to go last?
Yes, please.
You're, you're on now, sorry. You're on now. I'm doing an order, so Councilor Deterakis, you're next.
Hello. So it's too bad that Councilor Hat isn't here, because you could update the community on what's going on in the community for the month. I know that Hillary's Hope for Hunger is happening on Saturday, April twenty-ninth at eleven a.m. on Main Street, and also there is a townwide cleanup happening also on April twenty-ninth at nine a.m. My zone will be, obviously, in Ward three, and I'll be starting out at the post office. I'm also really pleased to hear that the baseball field will be upgraded. I'm sure there's a lot of families that are excited about that. And then the last thing I would like to, I'd like to like drop some facts, some, some numbers. Less than five percent of New Brunswick is considered as farmland. The amount of farmland in the province has decreased by almost thirty percent between two thousand one and two thousand and twenty-one, so those are some facts to consider. Getting a legal opinion on matters related to a conflict of interest are important, because one, none of us are lawyers, two, it's within our rights, it's within our rights to ask for legal opinion, and also, it's a decision of council to make that decision as well. And C, finally, it's cheaper than getting the mayor's office renovated, or any of these other, like, phases of renovations that we're going through, so those are my comments on that.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilor Thompson, and our deputy mayor.
The only thing I've got, I want everybody to know that all of council, we consider all the options and outcomes in everything we do. We talk, go over stuff, and be it common usage agreements, contracts, everything we do, we, we try to browbeat it, browbeat it to death enough that it's, we hope in your best interest when we come to a decision.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just have one, a couple of things tonight, I have a note from Councilor Hat, who couldn't be here tonight. Please give my regrets for being absent from tonight's council meeting. Could you also share many events, activities, and community engagements have been planned, and will be rolling out with, within the, the coming weeks? Please join the Eastern Charlotte Parks and Recreational Facebook page. So that is a page that where you can find a lot of the events going on in the area. It's called Eastern Charlotte Parks and Recreation, it's the Facebook page. Earth, Earth Day is the coming, is this coming Saturday, April the twenty-second, mark your calendars for Saturday, April the twenty-ninth, and join us, join us as we clean up the community, and clean up locations, and more information can be found on the Facebook page, and that's from Councilor Hat tonight. On Thursday evening, March twenty-third, I attended the Southwest Service Commission's Board Meeting in St. Stephen with all the other mayors, including our worship Bonnie Morse from Graham and Ann, his worship Denny Cogswell from Fundy Shores, his worship Brad Henderson of St. Andrews, his worship Helen McEckern of St. Stephen, his worship Ken Stanics of McCam, his worship Harry Matthews from Campabella, and Jim Tubbs representing the rural areas. From this meeting, it was voted on, it was voted on to lower the recycling surcharge by twenty dollars, and this, in the run of the year, will mean about a fifty thousand dollar savings for Eastern Charlotte. We also voted to renew Raymond Hall to the Prac, who was just finishing up his four-year term. During this meeting, we were informed that the Service Commission can now provide the bylaw enforcement for dangers around tightly premises, and a significant savings to the municipalities. They will charge on a case-by-case fee, and that night, that same night, Graham and Ann, immediately they signed on to the, to that service. On Monday, April the third, I attended the executive meeting for the Service Commission in Lawrence Station with the other executives. There was another meeting with the RCMP, Mayors and Service Commission Public Safety Committee, which our deputy mayor is a member, and he was at that meeting. Last month, I attended the Personnel Committee, Health Services Committee, four committees of the whole, and two Fire Committee meetings. Before tonight's meeting, I had the pleasure to speak to the Granite Town Seniors Club and inform them on what we, as a council, are working on, and on May the thirty-first, the Granite Town Seniors will be celebrating fifty years of being a club. Very happy belated birthday goes out to tonight, to, to, I always call him the Honorable, the Honorable Sheldon Lee of Bonny River, who turned ninety on March the twenty-ninth, as well, happy birthday to Alma O'Coyn, who turned ninety-two on April the third, happy birthday to Gifford Cook, who turned eighty-five on April the fifth, Terry Savoy down in Black Silver, my area, turned seventy-five on April the third, Emelda Blanchard, now, Emelda Blanchard and Alma are sisters, and Emelda actually turned eighty-five, there's five years between them, she turned eighty-five on April the sixteenth, and they both live in the same housing units here in St. George, so, very happy birthday to Emelda. And this coming weekend, May Hamley, I think, believe she's in the Back Bay area, she turns eighty on the twenty-third of April, and Shirley Wilcox turns seventy-five on Mother's Day. May the fourteenth, Louise Dwyer, everybody knows Louise, will be turning ninety on, on Mother's Day weekend. Tonight, I want to send out congratulations to Kelly Cove Salmon, a member of the Cook family of companies, who obtained a certification of determination to proceed from the New Brunswick Department of Environment and Local Government for his proposed land-based Atlantic Salmon Post Smolt Aquaculture Facility in Bayside, which is now St. Andrews. It will be a seventy-two million dollar project, creating many local jobs, as a, a major boom not just to St. Andrews, but the, the entire region. On April the sixth, I was honored to assist in the grand opening of the ribbon cutting of the hub on Twenty-Eightth Main Street, St. George, and this is a community space, space where the, the community members in all of Eastern Charlotte can socialize, pursue common interests, and find support when needed, and also free Wi-Fi with access to computers. The list of community partners currently includes Hospice of Charlotte, Sophia Recovery, Mental Health and Suicide Awareness Team, CMHA of New Brunswick, Working Stronger Together, Ginger's Scrapbooking, Family and Child Education, and, and FACE, F-A-C-E, is running an infant massage group every Thursday. And I think that's about it, and also, on behalf of myself and the council of Eastern Charlotte, I send out sympathies to the families of Baby Bailey, Donald Kenneth, Craig Linton, Ivan Richard, Donald Bradford, Lloyd Travis, Bonnie Weir, who all passed away this past month. At this point, that's everybody, I'm going to look for a motion for adjournment. Councilor Tid, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming.